To order. Welcome, everyone, to this regular meeting of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency. It is Monday, November 4th, 2024, and the time is 1:30 PM. This meeting is now called to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Sidens, would you please call the roll?
Chair Naklis?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker?
Here.
Commissioner Singer?
Here.
Commissioner Wigder?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Chairs, in speaking with you earlier, you had requested that we amend the agenda to move Item 10, Director's Report, up after the Presentation section of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Can I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Singer and Drucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you all. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of October 7th, 2024, and October 21st, 2024?
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second.
And thank you, Mr. Wigder. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, motion passes. We have no presentations today, and we have no business to consider under quasi-judicial and related public hearings. So now, we will go to the Director's Report. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chair. You know, follow-up to the October 21st, 2024 meetings of the CRA and City Council, where you adopted Resolutions 2024-06 CRA and City Resolution 97, 2024. These resolutions conditionally approved the landlord plans for the Center for the Arts and Innovation, and provided that the Center had to comply with terms and conditions outlined in an extension of time to meet second fundraising threshold letter that was attached to those resolutions. The conditional extension of time required, provided as follows: that the timeline for meeting the second fundraising threshold would be extended to January 7th, an extension of 78 days. The Center would be required to disclose cash on hand within five days of the date of the letter. The Center would provide all available updates to construction, budget, and business plan by December 31st of 2024, and the city would not issue a notice of termination during this extension period. The conditional extension also provided that the second fundraising threshold was not met within 78 days, that the city reserved its right to exercise the remedies in the PCDA, including termination if deemed necessary, and that the Center was to confirm its agreement to the extension and the associated conditions by returning the conditional extension letter to us by later than October 25th, 2024. And if the letter was not executed and returned by that date, the extension would be null and void. The Center received the letter on October 22nd, and by email on Friday, the 25th of October, advised us that it would not execute the conditional extension. Instead, the Center indicated its intent to propose a realignment amendment to the PCDA by November 25th, that a proposed amendment would introduce revised fundraising thresholds, performance dates, and other terms. In its October 25 letter, the Center proposed to submit such realignment amendment after discussion and negotiation with the city staff and legal counsel, and request that it be placed on the agenda for consideration in January. During the CRA and Special Counsel meetings of October 21st, the Center proposed the idea of a realignment amendment, but after extensive discussion, the proposal was expressly considered and rejected by the City Council and the CRA Board, which instead voted to adopt the conditional approval resolutions. Because the conditional extension was not executed by the Center, it is no longer in effect, null and void. Consequently, the conditional extension of time and for fundraising approval was not approved, and the conditional approval of the landlord plans did not become effective. According in summary, the landlord plans are not approved because the conditions of approval set forth in the resolutions were not met, and the Center is also not in compliance with the terms and conditions of the pre-construction and development agreement because it has not met the second fundraising threshold without an effective extension. That is the current state of affairs in the matter, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open up public requests. Anyone wishing to come up and be heard on this matter, or any matters relating to the CRA, please come up, state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. You're welcome to come up. And if you need a little extra time, you may have it also.
Good afternoon, Chair Nicholas, Vice Chair Commissioners. I want to take this opportunity first to thank you for allowing us an opportunity to make this statement. More so, my purpose here today is to just stand behind and give a voice to the Center's letter of October 25th.
Madam Chair?
Excuse me, sir, can you state your name?
Sorry about that part. Sorry, Brian Hickey, I'm an attorney. Yeah, sorry. Brian Hickey, an attorney with the law firm of Nation Jaeger Gerson Harris, and I'm here today on behalf of the Center. Okay. So again, I'm here really to stand behind and give a voice to that letter of October 25th. More so, again, we want to thank you for your collaboration and the appreciation for the proposed 78-day extension. But we did not want to sign an agreement that, as of right now, is not ripe and that we could not achieve. We could not satisfy the very conditions that are in that letter. And please, we do not want the city to take that as a referendum of our unwavering support for the Center, for the efforts to date, or that we cannot achieve the thresholds. But instead, the reason we can't do it is we do not want to sign something and not live up to what we agreed to. We want to take this time, essentially the about 78 days that you have proposed, to put together what we've kind of defined as a realignment. A realignment of our dates, of our thresholds, of our fundraising efforts, to be more in line with the third-party consultants and our own donors that we have worked with over the past two-plus years. And what we're asking the city is, we're not asking you to waive any rights. We're just really asking to reserve your rights. Give us an opportunity, as a partner in this, to work together with you, to be collaborative with you. Let us propose to you these terms, these proposed realigned threshold dates, and let's work together like we did a year and a half ago with the city staff and the city's outside council, and try to come together with something that ensures the success of this project, and not act prematurely and sign something that we simply could not achieve. Our hope is that you will direct city staff and its outside councils to work with us. As over the next few weeks, and I believe in our letter, we outlined by November 25th, we intend to propose a realignment amendment that puts together the terms and conditions that we believe will make this project a success, not just for us, not just for the city, but this partnership that we've created. And remember, there's something important to keep in mind. We have not asked you to waive your rights. We have just asked you to reserve those rights. At any point over the next couple of weeks or couple of months, as we work through this process and hopefully get to a January workshop date with an amendment. If you don't like what you see, you don't think it's feasible, you still have those rights that are under that agreement, whether it's because the conditional approval of the landlord plans has now not been approved or not been satisfied, whether it's because of the second fundraising threshold has not been achieved by that date. But we are hopeful, as a partner, you will see that through the hours and days and months and years of work that has gone into this with our donors and with our consultants, who live and breathe this on a daily basis, and by those consultants, not just our projects, but other type of capital campaigns related to this project, you will see that these dates and these revised thresholds are not just something we're pulling out of the air, but it's something that's rooted in history that does work, and that will put this project, continue this project, on a path of success for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. I have one card.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Hickey a question before he goes?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to, I appreciate your statement that we have reserved our rights, recognize that. I want to make sure, are there any requests pending from the Center today concerning the landlord approval?
There is no request, other than us asking to reserve the exercise of any rights to provide this next couple of weeks and months up through, hopefully, the January workshop, to work together on perhaps a revised, realigned amendment.
Right, and just to clarify, the exercise of the city of its rights, the reservation of the exercise by the city of its rights?
Correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Hickey? Okay. Mr. Graves, I have your card. The card says that you'd like to talk about a board interview. Can, I think you should...
...support for requests.
Okay, I think that should be under our City Council meeting, so I'm going to put your card here for the mayor to call you when that comes up, okay? Okay, so would anyone else like to come up and speak on any matters regarding the CRA? Okay. At this time, I'm going to close public requests, and let's see, move on to any discussion about Mr. Brown's report, or anything else? Or do we want to talk about what our options are?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We extended a good deal of grace at the last meeting. I'm still inclined to continue with that grace. I had a discussion with the Center for the Arts just today. We have yet to see what their proposal will be. I don't want to discuss a hypothetical yet until we know what that is. I expressed some thoughts and some concerns to them. I hope they take those into consideration, but I'm happy to reevaluate, and perhaps in January, where we are, where they might be with fundraising, is inconsistent with what we said. So I don't believe we, while we have the right to take certain actions today, I don't feel the need to do so today.
Okay. So do we need to, that's an option, to take a pause until January 7th, or just...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to weigh in.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, everyone. So kind of a couple of things that I kind of discussed with Mr. Brown briefly, and obviously no one in the council. Ms. Virgin and I haven't had the opportunity to connect because I kind of wanted to have this meeting, and I did relay this information to you in a very open, transparent manner. I didn't want the community to feel like we're doing things behind the scenes because there's been so much miscommunication. I think it's very effective for all of us to communicate and be on the same page, along with staff, et cetera. I too am for the goal of like, not just to terminate today, but to also allow for that timing, because we don't know the plan. We don't know where you're coming and where you're going to land. And I think what I shared, you know, with city attorney and the city manager, was sometimes when these things happen, it's like we can't just run to fix them, because you have to take a pause. That's one of the things that I've shared with some of the individuals I've spoken to over the weekend that have approached me. You've had change in your board, you've had changes just in a multitude of things, and I think to be the best partner, we have to allow you to find your footing again, and to find the ways forward for yourself. And also, as a city, we have to take the emotion out of it and all the disappointment, and also get back to work and figure out what this is going to look like, what your position is in the realignment amendment, but are we going to be comfortable with that, protecting our city and the community? What I will say today, and I tell this to the Center, is whatever you come back with has to work for both parties. It's not going to be like, we're going to give you everything you asked for because you didn't meet your goal. I've heard a few things about that, you know, the contract that we entered wasn't fair. So what I want to say to you is, a year ago, when you met the goals, it was fair. A year later, it's not. So we need to be on the same page in what's fair and what is not. We need to be transparent, we need to communicate, and we need to work together if we're going to move forward. That's all I ask. I've been asking for that, actually, all along. So with that, I will support us postponing to whatever the mayor said, which is a January 7th date, to see what your proposal is, but you're going to have to come with something that works for both parties. If not, I won't be behind it this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Mr. Wigder?
Thank you. While I didn't support the resolution in the form that it passed, once a resolution is passed by the City Council, I support it 100%. And in that regard, I think significant consideration was given by the council to the Center. And likewise, I agree with the mayor and my colleagues that taking a pause right now to, until January 7th, gives the Center an opportunity to reflect on a potential path forward. And in those considerations of the timeline, and you heard a lot of the things that we talked about last week, I hope you'll understand that the consideration that we're considering, that we think about, it's for the people, right? This is the people's center. And in that regard, if it's going to be a public-private partnership, I hope you can appreciate that what you should come back with also is consideration for the people, and that includes significantly more transparency than has been provided in the past. And I said it last week, and I'll say it again, I think that's going to have to include audited financials, quarterly financials, maybe a seat on the board, significant, significant disclosure about how things are going. Who is on your board? We don't know. There are significant issues. How much is this going to cost? What's the range? I feel we could have those questions two years later. So like I said, I hope consideration can be given to the people on the things that they're considering, too. If you're looking for an opportunity to amend this agreement, think about the things that the city and our people would like to know in order to have a fair agreement on mutual, that's mutually beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigder. Mr. Thompson?
I think everything that my colleagues have said has been very well said, remarkably well said, given the situation, in my view. This is something that I did support. I want this, I always wanted this center to succeed, but I took that agreement pretty seriously. We spent a year, the city did, negotiating that, and so we're finding ourselves in a tough spot, and it's, I think it was the right thing to do to extend grace. It wasn't necessarily accepted, but I am also a big believer in grace upon grace, so I likewise will be happy to provide for at least a suspension, a suspended state, so to speak, to allow you all to get what you think is a set of terms that you are comfortable with, but recognizing that that doesn't automatically mean that the city is going to find it acceptable from our end. And I think it's really the spot that we find ourselves in, and I think the way we're handling it now is the right path forward, and I'm going to be supportive of a suspended state.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I, I just want to clarify, because someone, I believe is Deputy Mayor Drucker, used the word "pause." I just want to clarify from my own statement, the Center, a couple of weeks ago, had asked for a pause, I think, of a number of months. I'm not agreeing to that. I'm talking about more of what describes suspended state. They're supposed to provide, they said they'd provide a letter within three weeks. I don't think there's much more to discuss for now. I think they should encourage, continue to do what they're doing, which is fundraising, which is addressing that concern, and if by January 7th, they might have great news to share, in which case, a lot of the concerns are obviated. Otherwise, we may have to come back and evaluate this. I don't want to speculate on what they're going to provide. I expressed some concerns to them privately today about what they might be thinking, but they haven't fully fleshed out their thoughts, so nothing further to say now. And at any moment, we can take any action, but let's see where progress comes and what information they provide. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. I too agree with my colleagues. I think a couple of weeks ago, we, as a board, tried to provide an option that protected the taxpayers and provided flexibility in the agreement. For reasons that, some reasons have been shared with us, some not, the Center decided not to sign that agreement. Despite that, like Mr. Thompson said, I'll give you some grace upon grace. And we all up here have expressed support for the vision of what this land is supposed to be used for, and we know that you've done a lot of hard work, but as Mr. Wigder again pointed out, and Ms. Drucker, there has to be so much more transparency, and this cannot be a one-sided discussion going forward with only what the Center needs. The city also has learned what we need. So that will be the discussion going forward. I also don't see a need to draw this out, so I would say we come back on January 7th and reopen the discussion. Do I need a motion to do that? No? Mr. Brown?
The next meeting after December 10th is on January 13th. That's a workshop, CRA and workshop date, so it would actually be the 13th that we would advise you of status with regard to the 7th. But the 7th will be the date that the suspension of action, when it ends.
Thank you for that clarity, Mr. Brown. So we will resume discussion on January 13th.
And Madam Chair, just on the suspension, like, I'm not moving that we actually, I'm just moving we take no action today, pending what we'll have information on January 7th. I want to reserve all of our rights, including if something happens November 25th or 6th, or doesn't happen, that we might take action more quickly. But I wanted to, again, give the Center a little more time, and part of this also is to really pause city efforts, which have been extensive, and which I want to thank Mr. Brown and staff for their years of work that has gone into this, and not exert more time now until we know more.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Agreed. Okay? Okay. Moving on, we have no resolutions today for any other regular, regular business, so we'll move on to, we had the Director's Report. Mr. Brown, do you have any other reports?
No other report today, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Attorneys' reports, Mr. Kahler?
I have no report.
Mr. City Attorney? Thank you. Now on to Commissioners' reports. Vice Chair Thompson?
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer.
No report, Madam Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker.
No report, thank you.
Mr. Wigder?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. So my report, as always, includes some upcoming downtown activities, courtesy of the downtown manager, Ruby Riley. November 7th, at 11:00 AM, we have the Boca Raton Museum of Art will premiere their latest exhibition, Splendor and Passion: Baroque Spain and Its Empire. This exhibit will showcase a selection of 57 paintings from the Hispanic Society Museum and Library Collection of Baroque Art, and will kick off the Boca Raton Museum of Art's 75th Anniversary Season. Tickets are available at BocaMuseum.org. On November 7th, at 6:00 PM, the City of Boca Raton Night Market makes its monthly return to Sanborn Square. This event showcases vendors featuring delicious food options, sweet treats, local artists and crafters, live music, and more. The Night Market series is free and open to the public. Learn more at myboca.us/night-market. November 8th, at 6:00 PM, join Yogi Leslie Glickman at Sanborn Square for supersonic yoga. MC Yogi and DJ Taz Rashid are going to be mixing music just for her class through custom headphones. Take part for great yoga and great music. Tickets and more information are available at Facebook.com/ yogajourney. Here's what's coming up at the Funky Biscuit. November 9th, at 6:00 to 9:00 PM, the Dancing Machine Tribute to the Jacksons. November 13th, at 7:00 PM, the Brenda Johnson Band. November 15th, at 5:00 PM, Friday Happy Hour with Toucan Blue. November 16th, at 7:00 PM, Dark Side of the Soul, the ultimate tribute to Pink Floyd. Get your tickets at FunkyBiscuit.com. November 11th, at 4:00 PM, the city celebrates those who have served with red, white, and Boca, a Veterans Day celebration at the Meiser Park Amphitheater. This event is free and will feature live music, guest speakers, and a veterans marketplace with veteran-owned businesses and service organizations throughout the local community, and new this year, a classic car show. Learn more, excuse me, learn more at myboca.com. November 16th, at 7:30 PM, rock band OAR is coming to the Meiser Park Amphitheater. With their rock reggae sound and jam band feel, it's the perfect concert for your Saturday evening. Get your tickets before they're gone at MeiserAmp.com. November 20th, at 6:00 PM, the Boca Raton Historical Society will host their 28th Annual Walk of Recognition Ceremony and Reception at the Addison and Downtown Boca. This ceremony and reception celebrates the 2024 inductees who have demonstrated a significant long-term commitment to serving the interests of Boca Raton and enriching the lives of its residents. Learn more at BocaHistory.org. Have you taken the Boca Connect Shuttle yet? This on-demand service is now running in downtown Boca and beyond, offering first-mile, last-mile mobility solutions within and around the downtown area and in the city. Visit DowntownBoca.org for more information, to download the app to your phone, and to find out how you can get your first two rides for free. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for that updated list. I want to remind everyone to please visit DowntownBoca.org and to download the My Boca app to keep up with all the happenings downtown and to report concerns. Make sure you have that Circuit app on your mobile device. We'll be getting an update during our workshop meeting today on our ridership. A reminder to please visit and support all of the businesses in the downtown, especially the many small locally-owned businesses and restaurants in the downtown. And of course, if you have any ideas you'd like to share with me, please send an email to F. Naklis@myboca.us, or give me a call. I'd love to hear from you. And with that, and no other business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned at 1:54
Special meeting of the City of Boca Raton. It is Monday, November 4th, 2024. The time is 1:56. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise and join in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sidens, will you please call the roll? Mayor Singer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Drucker?
Here.
Councilmember Naklis?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Wigder?
Here.
All present. Thank you. The purpose of the special meeting is to have follow-up discussion on the October 21st, 2024 meetings. In light of the conversation we just had at our CRA meeting, I expect this to be relatively short, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward now. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. Mr. Brown, you gave an eloquent report, your manager report, under the last meeting. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir, and I would, based upon the decision of the CRA, which is a partner with the city in this transaction, I would suggest that we have the same susp- this transaction, I would suggest that we have the same suspension of any action until January 7th, to be reported on the 13th.
Right. And just again, to clarify, we're not waiving any rights to act before then, but we don't anticipate acting until we see more information from the center, including fundraising numbers. Is that right? Correct. Thank you. Any further discussion among council members? Seeing none, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. We'll resume in a moment for our workshop meeting. Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, November 4th, 2024. The time is 1:59 p.m. We have no proclamations or presentations today, so we'll turn to board interviews. And the first board for which we're seeking applicants is the Boca Raton Housing Authority. We're pleased to see Ms. Marie Hester, our current board member, who is looking to reapply. Please come forward, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes about to talk about why you want to continue to serve.
Good afternoon. Marie Hester, 135 Pearl Street, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. Actually, I like to say that I really miss coming to these meetings because I enjoy them and they're very informative. And I've had an emergency with my husband who had to have open-heart surgery, so a lot of time, I'm spending all my time trying to get him well. But at the same time, I have enjoyed being a commissioner and sitting on the housing board, and there's a lot of things to be learned. When I first got there, there was a lot of confusion, and we have gotten to the point where we are acting like a professional group of people. And we've been working with the residents council, and I think there are a very important group of people at Dixie Manor. And at the same time, working with the director, who is actually just like us, like the folks sitting on the board, because she's learning also. And I think working as a commissioner really requires a lot of homework. I enjoy it. And the last thing we just did, it was time for the evaluation of the director. We did not want to come around the table as a group and just name some ridiculous amount of money to give her. We actually chose a professional performance evaluation that each one of us had to fill out and grade her. And voila, it was so much better, so much better. So we continued to work and tried to work with the residents and the residents council and the director. And I really appreciate working with the group of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hester? No, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and our best wishes to your husband for speedy recovery and full recovery. That concludes our board interviews, because we've not received any applicants for the Environmental Advisory Board or Permitting and Construction Review Board, so all but the Florida public requests. Mr. Graves, you're recognized. I don't think it'll be a hard sell, but please come forward anyway, give your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Charles Graves, 299 Northwest 52nd Terrace, Boca Raton, 33487. I'm here to support Marie Hester for the Housing Authority Board. I've known Marie for as long as I've been here. Marie is a hard worker. She's very focused in what she does, and she's a very stable element to the Housing Authority. Over the next five years, the Housing Authority is going to go through significant changes through Dixie Manor. And it's going to be a stressful time for the board, it's going to be a stressful time for the residents. And I think having Marie there, along with Angela McDonald, who's a very stable person who lives in the community, and those two are going to be very instrumental over the next five years as Dixie Manor goes to redevelopment. The second thing I'd like to say is that I serve on the Affordable Housing Committee. They have a very short window. They're there to perform a federal requirement to have a committee to review their program. But I think that this council should consider something more for an Affordable Housing Committee. Affordable housing is very crucial in Boca Raton. You have a strategic plan, you have an approach, and I think that an Affordable Housing Committee, maybe it's this one or maybe it's another one. But to have an Affordable Housing Committee, just like you have an environmental committee, permitting committee, and I think that that's something that council should consider as affordable housing becomes more critical in the city. Thank you. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make any public requests? Last call for public requests. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the time for public requests. I will tell Ms. Hester that we will make the appointments at our council meeting tonight, which has been moved because of Election Day. You do not need to attend later tonight to be considered. We will gladly consider you, and we will bear in mind your comments, Mr. Graves. With public requests closed, we'll turn to review of regular agenda items. Council members, does anyone have any questions concerning the agenda that will be discussed later tonight? Seeing no one come forward, seeing none, we'll turn to future agenda matters, of which we have none. So we'll turn to city manager reports, and we have two exciting updates. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Zach Beer, our Municipal Services Director, and the Mobility Team will make a presentation on Circuit, the last-mile shuttle that we've instituted in the downtown, providing service to the downtown. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Beer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Zach Beer, your Municipal Services Director. I'm going to run through the presentation, and then I have our support staff from Traffic and Mobility to answer any additional questions that you may have. So really quick recap for anybody, and throughout this, I'll do my best sales pitch as an advertisement as well for Boca Connect. Get out and use it. Make sure the residents are aware of it. So a really quick recap of the service area of what was instituted as part of the contract. All service trips shall begin and end in the red service area. So there's a little piece that was added to the specific designated downtown CRA, which is the area up to the Bright Line train station. And so within the red area, trips to and from, beginning and ending in the red area are free of charge. And then any of the surrounding areas beginning or ending in the blue area, taking someone starting in the blue area to the red area or from red to blue, costs riders a nominal amount of money. And the intention is, of course, to get people into the downtown. And so with that, a really quick recap of what's been happening. Service started on June 17th of 2024, and the operation hours are up there on the screen. I won't go through in great detail, but generally speaking, it's for normal business hours with the extension into the evening, Monday through Thursday, and then capturing those weekend activities specifically in the downtown up till the initial schedule was up to 2:00 a.m. And I'll be discussing that further in the presentation as we go. So current numbers of vehicles in our in-season is a total of four. One gem vehicle, which is the vehicle you see in the upper left, two sedan vehicles, the bottom vehicle, and then the EV van, which is in the upper right, which serves our ADA compliant requirement for our contract. And then the off-season, which is May through September, a total of three vehicles, the one gem, one sedan, and one EV vehicle. And right now, we are absolutely moving into the peak of what I would say in-season here after the Thanksgiving period into December. And the current total cost of coverage is $491,728. Now to our ridership data, as is with any startup program, you can see as we got into it at June, we're really figuring things out with the vendor, starting to identify the routes, the riders. They were getting staff on board. And then, as you can see, we progressed through the last four months. The ridership curve has increased. And I would just say, from staff's perspective, looking at the rate of change, we're seeing that that rate of change is coming down and flattening out a bit. And we would also expect to see over a full season, like we see with our other shuttle, some seasonality, where we're going to have peaks at high-season times, and then it'll come back down in the off-season period. Also note, in the upper right corner, the graph that you're looking at is the shared rides, which is something really, from a mobility perspective, we're trying to push. And you can see it started at none. And as we progress the program, we're up to 8% of a shared ride, which is really the optimal use of what we'd be looking for in our shuttle. And then one of the coolest things that I saw that came out in the data is in the bottom right corner, which is the demographics. And you will see no specific age group is dominating the usage, which I think is the coolest part of all the data that I got to review and analyze, because we're getting ridership at many different age groups. Then on to the ridership scatter plot. One of Circuit's elements that they presented was that they would be providing us all kinds of data, which is really something that we're looking for, that's generally useful in our mobility planning, our transportation planning. The council has brought up many times the concept of the hub, and that's something that we're continuously trying to figure out as we refine our mobility goals. So at the top, you've got pickup dots and a pickup heat map, and then bottom drop-off and a drop-off heat map. And it's very clear that the downtown, of course, beginning and ending destinations is the dominant heat map, but also fascinating to see that there is a spread of pickup and drop-offs within the area that we identified. So it's good to see that we weren't entirely off based on that base map that we looked at. But I think also want to make sure that I highlight it from this moving forward, that that first mile, last mile is really where we see the most effectiveness of the shuttle, and a lot of those rides are happening within that boundary area. Now down to the specifics of us developing the graph for the data. This is substantiated with our existing traffic data in our Traffic Management Center. We see an early PM peak at 1:00 p.m., and then our really heavy late spike at 7:00 p.m., which is also in line with all the data that we have for our downtown. The graph in the upper right is the number of passengers per service day, and you can see that varies throughout the day as you would expect. Then the bottom left, you see in September, we have an anomaly, which was one of the hurricanes. And so Circuit, as a private rider, makes the determination when it's unsafe to continue and suspends operations. And so with those, you see a slight drop-off at that specific date, but otherwise, we're hovering right around the 400 per week. Then down bottom right, the days of the week, you have a natural trend of down into Wednesday, and then peaking Saturday, which is the most active time that we would expect in the downtown. Then based on the existing information, and that really first mile, last mile that we're seeing, a natural development over to the east side, which includes that last mile service, especially in that blue area, is the area over to the beach. And I'm also learning things every day at the city, and recently learned from our downtown manager, that one of the subsections of 4035 identifies that the city, if the city is going to develop more than 4.9 square feet of office equivalents, it mandates that the City Show Institute beach access system involving a bus, trolley, jitney, or other alternative mode of transportation. I had to Google jitney, by the way, which I can clarify for you all, is a small bus or transportation that has an adjusting flexible schedule. But so really, thinking about that in combination with that area for the downtown, it would meet that requirement and also would really incorporate that last mile service. And initially, staff had concerns about the bridge operations, but based on that, we would take that, recommend to council that we discount when the bridge is up and down, and we really utilize that to learn about the Palmetto Park corridor or some of the activities that we've been looking at to get people in and out of the downtown. And, sorry, really quick on that, the anticipated process would be just like the blue area. So trips would have to begin and end either from the red to green or back green to red, and would be the same nominal fee that would be in the base area, just expanded to that really one-mile radius on the beach. So staff's additional costs and next steps. So we've identified that, based on our data, the riders from midnight to 2:00 a.m., we have pretty low ridership at that time. I could get into the details, but staff is suggesting that we end the service at midnight. And then, in the event that council would like us to move forward for the beach service, we would add vehicles at the hourly rate shown, at a total additional cost of $292,699. And then Circuit has been working with us to update revenues and look into ad revenues, because at the time we did the launch, we wanted to maximize our marketing from a city perspective. And so up until this point, all of the vehicles have been branded with city vehicles or with city logos and the downtown logos, so we haven't done any marketing. Circuit would go out and work with external vendors to offset some of those costs associated with the downtown shuttle. And with that, I am happy to answer any other questions for the latest in the pilot program for Boca Connect.
Council members, questions? Mr. Thompson?
Would the, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Beer. Fantastic work. Would the reduction in time from 2:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. allow for a reduction in the cost? And if so, what?
That's a great question. Thank you. It would be a marginal reduction in cost. Staff did the calculation, and it would be approximately something like $2,000 to $4,000 a month, based on cars per hour, per ride. It's just mainly from seeing, getting staff to operate those late times, it's harder to have staff in the midnight to 2:00 a.m. period. And when we calculated out the percentage, it's like 4% of riders. We get about 10, 10 to 15 riders a week at those late hours. So a nominal cost.
Fair enough, but I think that actually does change the calculus as far as I was, I assumed, I would have assumed that there would have been a higher reduction in cost associated with that timeframe. Now, I think that allowing for a free or very, very reduced cost there, especially at that time of night, provides a high safety value, because people are not getting behind the wheel when they shouldn't be. So I think we should weigh that. Is it worth saving $2,000 a month by eliminating that and eliminating that as a potential option? I'm not so sure that it does, but I'll keep it open mind.
Mayor Singer?
Council members, yes. Deputy Mayor Drucker?
Thank you, Mr. Beer, for the presentation. I agree with Mr. Thompson. I was thinking, as, you know, when I'm out there in downtown, and also because we were kind of off-season, so the numbers are great because of kind of off-season, but as everyone comes back into town, and college students spend a lot of time in that area, maybe if it's not that much of a difference, or maybe we just meet in the middle and go to 1. Because I know a lot of programming ends sometimes later, and our programming hasn't kicked in with like the concert series that are starting, so I think that the data might be a little skewed, because the programming has also been different, especially during the summer. And many of us are in and out during the summer. So I think that now when everybody's coming back and all the activities, tree lighting that's coming, like, there's just so many things that are upcoming that I'm not sure if it's not really such a savings, if it's really worth it, unless we just go to the middle instead of 2, maybe you do till 1. I'm not sure, because I see that air pretty busy, because a lot of the, not a lot, but a few of the establishments do stay open later in the downtown. So I'm kind of, yeah, flexible, but I think maybe we go to 1 or just stick to it and get the true pilot data.
Thank you. Before I get to you, Mr. Wigder, I'm sorry, just want to make sure I got the numbers right. Could you just repeat them, please?
Are you saying the numbers?
The change from 2:00 a.m. to midnight would save how much?
Yeah, so generally speaking, just running through the math in my head, and not my strong suit, even though an engineer, hours is, it's approximately four hours, so midnight to 2:00. And then four vehicles at $32 vehicle hour, so it's approximately for a week. And then into a month, it's about $1,000 to $1,500 for that saving, because marginally, based on the overall... for that savings, because marginally, based on the overall hours and the runtime of the vehicles, it's a very, it's a small percentage of the overall runtime.
Yeah. Just for, I'd be more inclined, that's a much bigger ROI, to at least continue the pilot to go. I'd be more willing to do that than I would necessarily expand for the larger sum to the bigger area. I think, you know, we're still in process here. Mr. Drucker.
No, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Beer. No, thank you for the data. Yeah, my feeling, I kind of agree with my colleagues, that the sample size, you know, we're not quite there yet, and in terms of the, you know, sample size for the data, I would say, we'd certainly want to have a sample of the whole season, and to see where that is. Certainly, I would say, you know, that from Christmas to New Year's peak, to see exactly where it is, and obviously, you can just foresee on New Year's Eve, if it was going to end at 11:59 PM, that I'm just seeing, like, you know, maybe on that one day, there's a difference, but, no, needless to say, that I think the sample size could be expanded. There was a bunch of downtown stuff this weekend. There was an art festival at Sanborn Square, and the other art festival at, you know, at Wildflower Park, and I noticed the Circuit cars hanging out there, and I thought that was great marketing, so that a lot of people, because I think right now, we're still in this marketing phase, where people don't know it exists. You know, when I talk to the students at FAU, they don't yet know it exists, even though it goes to the point of FAU on Glades Road. So, I think we need to do a little bit more in terms of outreach, in terms of people acknowledging that it exists, and they will start to use it. And the same would be for the Barrier Island, though I'm in favor of expanding to the Barrier Island. Are we going to go to all the condos there? Are we going to go, is it going to be some sort of specific marketing reach to go to them? Because I think that would be important, but I agree, that would certainly alleviate traffic, and could reduce significant parking concerns, if it's utilized effectively. So, you know, I think we're going in the right direction, and I think we just need to let it, the snowball, we need the snowball to build a little more. Thank you.
Ms. Knackles.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Thank you, Zach, for that presentation. I was really looking forward to it, so appreciate it. And I would agree that we just keep on, keep on moving along, and not change the times. At this point especially, it's not a lot of money right now, we need the data. Thanksgiving week coming up, I think that's going to be really busy, and yes, of course, New Year's. So, I'm in favor of that, and also, to what Mr. Drucker said about the, I'm also in favor of expanding to the Barrier Island, so I'm glad you're thinking about that. And as he said, are you thinking about doing specific stops on the Barrier Island, or are you considering going to every single stop along the way?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I actually, familiar with that area, asked that same question of staff, because going into the parking lots, or gated areas, or some other things, could have impacts on surface services. So, that's something that we're going to work with, being part of the pilot program, work with Circuit on, and then reach out to the BCA or the condo communities, and figure out how best to mitigate that, with being able to go to the areas, but not going in to specific areas, and doing like direct to pickup at one of the condo buildings. I think that would be concerning for the headways and some of the other times. So, it's something that our plan is to set that area up, and similarly to the downtown, work out some of the direct operational challenges with Circuit to be able to deliver that service.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Please, Ms. Drucker.
Yes, my last question, my last comment is, when we first, the first week we opened up the Boca Connect, a lot of the two hotels, that was one of the complaints, like, why are you not coming to the Barrier Island? Are we going to try to work with the hotels, and possible collaboration or partnership of, perhaps, they help with some of the costs that's associated, since they kind of wanted to use this service? Has that been approached?
So, to date, we haven't done that, but I really appreciate you bringing that, because I did want to talk a little bit about it on the other side. We are, of course, exploring all of those marketing options as we mature the service, and then also exploring grants. So, we kind of got out ahead of it, knowing that the DOT grant was going to take time, SBA working with Palm Tran, many of those, the DOT state agencies are offering grants, so we're pursuing all that as we continue the pilot program and collect the data. And then, with it being active, it provides us the opportunity to pursue that. So, yes, I can have a dialogue with Mr. Brown and staff to see if we can collaboratively work with them, if they want to sponsor something. I think as we look into the pilot program, that was the intention, to have that flexibility.
I think it would be important to contact not only the Boca Raton, but the Waterstone, their leadership, I mean, I'll share that with Mr. Brown, the individuals that approached me directly back in June, and I think we could have those conversations, for them to have some skin in the game, because we're going to be offering some of the, not only tourists, which helps with our downtown, but even residents that do staycations there. So, thank you, that's all. Thank you.
Further comments or thoughts? All right, thank you, Mr. Beer. Mr. Brown, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Next, we have an update on the proposals for the government campus redevelopment. As you know, we've received two proposals. Andy Lukasik, deputy city manager, is going to give a brief update on where we are and where we plan to go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Andy Lukasik, deputy city manager. So, to that point, brief. So, we have received two proposals from two development groups that are both qualified. As you know, we've received those over the course of the past two weeks, within a couple days of one another. We're already going through the process of doing an initial evaluation, in accordance with our administrative policies related to unsolicited P3s. And that initial evaluation includes a high-level look at the quality of the proposers, so looking at the firms, looking at their experience, looking at projects that they've implemented of similar scope or complexity, looking at the members of the team, looking at a preliminary site plan, that'll let us know, you know, what kind of development pattern are we looking at, what kind of character is it bringing, is it matching what you all have started to articulate in the strategic plan? Thinking about mobility, how is that going, how are the plans going to affect mobility and transportation in the area? And just as importantly, how are we going to function from a municipal perspective, since we have a bunch of civic and operational issues to address with, within the campus? So, we're going through that process right now. Oh, and of course, another important aspect is, what are the economic impacts of the proposals that are coming our way? Obviously, an incredibly valuable piece of real estate in the downtown area, we want to make sure that we get the proper value from any investments that are made within the City Hall campus area. So, we're taking a look at that in collaboration with CBRE, who is our consultant, and as you all know, we've been working with them over the course of the past couple of weeks. We're fine-tuning in agreement with them right now, but that should be done in short order. So, as we're going through this initial evaluation, in accordance with our administrative policies, we plan on wrapping up that evaluation sometime next week, in order to be able to come back to you at your workshop on November 18th, to be able to review our findings, and give you some recommendations in terms of how we plan on moving forward. Now, I will tell you that we are sort of predisposed to say, regardless of the quality of the proposals that we've received, it's highly likely that we're going to say, look, we need to go out for a competitive solicitation, so we can make sure that we're getting the quality that we want out of the development proposals, we're getting the value that we want out of the proposals, and that is meeting the long-term objectives that the council has in terms of community development. So, we haven't made that final determination yet. Certainly, we're thinking about that, because of the long-term impacts that any development on the government campus is going to have on the community in the downtown. But we're completing that evaluation, we'll make that recommendation to you at the next workshop. So, more than happy to answer any questions that you might have, we're still, like I said, in that preliminary phase, but very excited about what we've received so far.
Council members, any questions, thoughts? Mr. Drucker.
Thank you very much. Do you anticipate that the agreement with CBRE will be completed such that they will be able to assist the city and your department in evaluating the proposals before the next workshop?
Well, let me answer it this way. The agreement might not be completely done, but we're already working collaboratively with CBRE to do the evaluation, so not only have they received the proposals and they're reviewing them, but they're also working in advance of making a recommendation to the council, a competitive solicitation document that we could use going forward. So, they're already thinking about, well, what would it look like if we issue an RFP and we do a competitive solicitation? So, that type of work is already happening.
And if we do a competitive solicitation, is it under the P3, under the 255 statute, that we're looking for those parameters? Or are you trying to go in a different, or is the thought process to go in a different direction than the statutory P3 submittal, which has a list of those things?
Let me try to answer that, and tell me if I'm hitting the mark for you. So, as we issue that competitive document, you know, we're going to be asking them strategically, and what, let me back up. So, when we come to you on the 18th, we're going to be asking you probably for some details, largely if we go out and we do a competitive solicitation. So, we're going to want to make sure that we have some conversation about what are the exact expectations? We think we know, but we want to make sure that we're talking to you about that. So, as we structure that competitive solicitation, we're going to make sure that we have those strategic priorities and objectives in that document. So, when somebody responds, or somebody clarifies their response, they're able to, you know, kind of check the boxes in terms of what council wants to see. We'll put our parameters in there, we're going to certainly be guided by what's in statutory language, as it relates to some of the requirements. We'll be guided by what's in our own administrative policy, in terms of our expectations, and what kind of responses that we get. But, so it'll be a little bit of a combination of, you know, those statutory requirements, our administrative requirements, and then the strategic priorities that the council has established through our planning process. Does that, does that answer your question?
No, it does answer the question, yeah. The question will then be to the city attorney, and you don't have to give an opinion today, but the idea is, my understanding, and pursuant to your previous memoranda, is that, you know, the P3 statute has its own framework for submittal, which also includes a framework for an open solicitation, that would not necessarily necessitate another open framework. So, I think, you know, there should probably be an internal dialogue of what the process should look like, and I think those things can be reconciled prior to the next meeting. So, again, we can have those conversations offline. Thank you.
Questions, thoughts? Ms. Knackles.
Thank you. I just have a question on whether we're going to have another visioning session. We had one about, I don't know, a month and a half ago, and, but Mr. Lukasik just touched on it again, you know, what the council wants to see. It was pretty basic, what we had said a month and a half ago, but now, I think we need to start drilling down a little more. So, when would you expect that to happen with us?
So, some of it depends on timeframes, you know. We've, so there have been at least two occasions where we've gotten some of that high-level conversation from you, so we have, we have an idea about what you want to accomplish. CBRE has listened to some of those conversations as well, so we think that we have a pretty good idea. At our next meeting, if we're sharing with you some of our thoughts in terms of trying to check the boxes in terms of mobility, and activity on the site, and character on the site, and you think that we're capturing where you want to go, then I think we're in a good spot. Now, if we're sharing something with you, and we haven't quite hit the mark yet, then I think we need to reserve a little bit more time and go back and revisit it. But you all have been relatively clear, from a high-level perspective, as to what you want to see. I think we can drill down enough in a workshop setting to be able to get a little bit more detail, and make sure that we get some clarification from you, to be able to move forward, so we're not delaying much longer if we're doing a competitive solicitation.
So, at the November 18th workshop?
Correct.
Thank you.
Further thoughts or questions? Ms. Knackles, I was just talking to Mr. Brown. I think in response to your suggestion, we could have some discussion two weeks from now. I think we'll have a little more time to evaluate that. I'm happy to, I'm always happy to talk about this most important priority. So, if you're already in game a couple of weeks from now, we can share some thoughts. And Mr. Brown?
If I could, in response to Ms. Knackles, and what Mr. Lukasik was saying, think between now and the 18th, of your vision, of what this is going to be like. It doesn't have to be that there's a building here, and this is there, and, you know, those kind of details, but what is it you want to see, in terms of vision? How does it feel? What's the public realm feel like? What's the entire experience feel like? And we can talk about that, and make sure that a scope that we develop, if we're putting out a request for issuing a solicitation, that it's clear what we're looking for, and then we react to what we get back from the proposers.
And then, I have one other question. You say it's highly likely that we'll put an RFP out. What kind of competitive window are you envisioning? Are you envisioning a short window, or are you envisioning a longer window?
Okay, so, so it'll probably take us a month, month and a half, to get the RFP squared away. CBRE will recommend allowing proposers to respond within 90 days. So, you'll have a 90-day window for that, so you have three months there. And then, giving you the recommendation, so we can revisit it. A review of proposals, depending upon how many you receive, you know, you can think about four to six weeks, perhaps, to be able to have thorough review of proposals. And then, it's the negotiation and the awarding phase. So, you could have, you could have seven months, maybe up to nine months, depending upon how long it takes.
The shortest window possible is 21 days? Is that correct?
It's too short. For?
For that window of, after the RFP, the competitive window. Is it 20, is there a, the least amount of time? I thought I heard 21 days. Is that correct? Okay.
I believe so.
Sorry, just to frame for the record, yes. If you're operating under the, if the council's electing to open up a competitive process, and you're operating under the P3 statute, as opposed to a hybrid of your home rule authority and the P3 statute, which I believe this is, the minimum amount would be 21 days.
Thank you.
Please, Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. Thank you, Mr. Lukasik, for the update. A shorter window, we've been talking about government center for a long time this year, strategic planning in May. We talked about it, it's our number-one strategic plan item, and we talked about it last year. People are out there, we've been asking for partnerships. I know the mayor and I, and other council members have been on the council the last two years. It's not a surprise, it's been written about. So, however, we can bring the timelines in. Obviously, we have two proposals that came in, I'm not discussing the proposals, I have not enough opportunity to really, you know, kind of dig into the nitty-gritty of the proposals, but I think seven months is a very long time. People know we are ready to move, it's a priority of the city, and however we can shorten that, I'm in agreement with Ms. Knackles, and CBRE is listening, you know, we're moving, so they need to help us move along and get the ball rolling. So, that would be my, what I would recommend. And we could definitely have further discussion on November 18th, and I think Mr. Brown brought a good idea of think of our vision and experience our feels, and I think we've already thought of that a lot in the past. So, let's not delay the process, let's get the ball rolling, let's move.
Here, here. Further thoughts? I'll weigh in, yes, I agree. First, I want to thank staff, because there was some doubt earlier this year, whether we'd get proposals and win. We already got two, there may be more coming. So, the private sector has responded to what, as Ms. Drucker said, we have put, and Ms. Knackles said, we have put out there. I think a shorter timeline is more appropriate, I've discussed with the city manager, I think CBRE will do well to listen to our input there. But, you know, they didn't come in half-baked, these people have been thinking about this some time, so I think we can move, we could be order, you know, cut that timeline down in half, I think is realistic, on the time. I want to thank staff for putting together that memo, that gives another framework, and continue to think about that. And again, when you mentioned RFP, it's not a traditional request for proposals anew, it's a request for follow-on proposals in response to what's already out there. So, I want the private sector clear on the nomenclature here that we're using. So, anyone else interested, come and see us now, because we're going to move quick, but not that quick, considering we've been talking about this for many years. So, we're going to, we're hopefully going to land the plane, and get something magical that's going to be transformative for the next century. Further thoughts? Mr. Drucker.
No, thank you, and certainly, I think part of that process is going to include the proposers making their presentation with their engineers, and planners, and exec-
their presentation with their engineers and planners and executives and, you know, and their experience for, for entities that have been doing this, you know, large organizations that have been doing this all over the country and in fact, the world, for making their presentations for their vision or helping us achieve the city's vision as well. So I just want to make sure that that's part of the, the process too, rather than being awarded, you know, rather than something being awarded without us, without the public being able to see all options. Certainly, I think that'll be part of the process.
Very important one, thank you for seeing so. All right, any other further thoughts? Again, thank you for staff for continuing to prioritize our number one item.
Thank you for your input.
And Mr. Brown, still your report?
I have one more item for you all, just to remind the council that Florida, we have a campus development agreement with Florida Atlantic University. We are currently under an extension. That extension is due to expire in this December. Therefore, we, FAU has requested another extension of the existing campus development agreement. We will propose a year's extension yet again. It's understandable that they need an extension considering what's been going on at the university and the fact that it's very difficult for them to plan the future when they don't have a key component of the future formally on board. So that will be coming at the December meeting. It's a resolution, it'll be on the agenda. We, staff has been in contact with FAU about it.
Very well, thank you. Anything further?
No, thank you.
All right, city attorney reports? Mr. Kaler?
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember reports? I'll start on my left with Mr. Thompson.
No report, thank you.
Ms. Knackles?
No report, thank you.
Ms. Drucker?
Yes, I have a report since we're talking a few things and we have a little bit of time. First, I wanted to thank staff and because of the Transportation and Mobility Group is here today, they kicked off the Vision Zero Action Plan Meeting about a week and a half ago. So well-attended. Thank you for everyone that came out to show support and thank you for the council members that were there for this vision that we had a few years ago. And it was so nice to see so many community members there and giving their input. So if you haven't taken the survey, please go on our website and, and take the survey, but so important to, to have that in as part of the plan. So if you want to be a part of a solution, please give the input. And I understand that they're going to be putting together more of these public outreach meetings, so stay tuned for that. With that also, Ms. Knackles and I sit on the Transit Planning Agency for Palm Beach. We had our meeting last week. The 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan, also referred to as LRTP, the draft is out there. They recommend that if anyone from staff wants to have one-on-ones with the TPA to review and provide information. Again, this is the opportunity for the public, council members, staff to provide input on the plan. The reason it's important is because the LRTP is a way that we get our funding. And even though 2050 seems so long away, it's going to come approaching us before you know it. I know it sounds crazy, but this is a one opportunity that you have to have this input. So I wanted to also share that information. I think, let me see, what else I had here in terms of transit? I think those were, I am getting ready to go up this week with some of my fellow council members up to Orlando. Our legislative action meetings have started. I sit on Transportation and Recovery, I guess is its new name of this, of this organization. There's been a lot of talk about gas tax and I wanted to put that out there. If you have any opinions on it, any recommendations before we fully adopt what we're going to bring up to Tallahassee as a Florida League of Cities group in our December meeting, please go ahead and email me directly. You're very easy to find, just @drucker on the MyBoca website and, and I'm there. And then next week, I'll be missing a lot of the activities that are happening in the city because I will be going up to National League of Cities and participating on a series of presentations and panels also around transportation, but with other committees that I sit representing the city. So I'm going to miss a lot of the events, but I'm going to be up there again, policy and transportation on the federal level. And we, as a city, even today, we received an update, we're trying to get some federal funding as well for grants to improve transportation and mobility. So with that, I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiger.
I'll report for this evening.
Thank you. And I'll just give a brief report now. At the last regular meeting, the council designated me to quote, I guess, act as negotiator for the contract with Mr. Kaler. I think I, the right term really is facilitator since there was little negotiation. After discussing this with Mr. Brown, I asked Mr. Brown to reach out to outside council so it wasn't going through the city attorney's office to avoid any appearance that there was someone on the same side. Louis Longman and Walker took a look at the form contract that was similar to what the prior city attorney had, used that as a baseline, made some minor comments. I discussed those with him. He then shared that with Mr. Kaler. Mr. Kaler opined, and then Mr. Thomas, Glenn Thomas, shared those with me. I believe we have agreed, agreed, agreed to all the terms of the contract. And what I expect is that at the next council meeting, under the consent agenda, that contract will be presented for council review. Breadline will be provided to council members to, to compare that to what was in the prior agreement with Ms. Freezer. Again, none of the material terms changed. I think it was more just some wordsmithing. The material term of price did not change because Mr. Kaler's salary request was within the range that put out to market. It was actually lower than some of the other requests that came in and was vetted by our outside consultant for consistency with other attorneys of his skill and experience. So with that, I believe we'll have a, a matter wrapped up neatly for the next meeting and we can remove the interim title from Mr. Kaler's current title. And if there are no further questions on that, then that will conclude my report. We will resume at 6:00 PM tonight for our regularly scheduled council meeting and in the meantime, we'll adjourn at 2:45. Thank you.